Here we go.
But should it be on the YouTube channel? I still don't see it.
It may not be on the YouTube channel, though.
Okay, just in the Zoom, yeah.
Yeah. But there's nobody watching, so you know.
I'll test it.
Why don't we go on the record nonetheless and explain that the public hearings that were scheduled for this evening have been canceled because we had some problems with Zoom. Couldn't open up all channels for the public. And we will be rescheduling those public hearings either for our next meeting on December 15th. Or if that's not possible, we'll reschedule for one of our meetings in January. We apologize to the public for that. Although I would say to Steve and the staff, this is the first time we've had a serious issue with Zoom, considering the number of meetings we've held and the kinds of problems that frankly I've experienced personally using Zoom in other venues. I think we've done very well. And again, sorry for this hiccup this evening. With that, we have some items that are not public hearings. So why don't we go to those? And that's under new business. The first being 2021-01R/SPRAP2LLC, 125 Richards Avenue. Text amendment to definition of elderly housing unit to allow the use of the B resident zone by special permit. This is a preliminary review. And I believe Attorney Blank is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Schuman. Yeah, and I thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight. I'll give a brief presentation. We had agreed that we would not bring our full team here to present tonight. We do have Clay Fowler of Spinnaker and Jerry Efron of Grayrock, who are the developers on this project on this call. And if any questions come up for them, they'd be happy to field them. But otherwise, you'll just be hearing from me this evening. I'm Adam Blank, again, the attorney for the applicant, live here in Norwalk. And if I can share my screen. Here we go. So RAP is the owner of 125 Richards Avenue, which you guys can see that my screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, great, which is right here. This is about a 2.54 acre piece of property. It's in the B resident zone. Connecticut Avenue is down here. You've got Home Depot, Walmart and that home goods store. And then along Richards, there's a couple of condo and apartment complexes. This is the one that caught fire a year or two ago, had a pretty big fire there. There's a new assisted living or congregate care facility here in the parcel next door. This was originally, my clients own that and were involved with the zoning approvals to get that approved as assisted living just a couple of years ago. Then you've got it, this is, I think, office and industrial use here. Once you get beyond our parcel here, there are a couple of sort of single or two-family homes in here. And then it's cemetery up to Norwalk Community College. So, and this is the B resident zone here as well. So what we'd like to do is is to put 10 sort of single-family homes or really five duplexes with two houses in each for senior housing. We're pretty excited about it. The idea is to put more on the high end of homes that are geared just for seniors. They'll be first floor master bedroom, completely ADA compliant and designed to allow folks that are, you know, 60 and over to age in place here. And it sort of fills in, we think, a need in Norwalk and in Fairfield County and Connecticut as a whole for something other than your typical congregate care or assisted living facility. And, and you know, you've got an aging population. And this, this type of development, what we would offer would be all of the exterior maintenance and landscaping would be taken care of for the residents. And then this model would, this would be offering the residents the opportunity, but not the requirement for them to have interior like housekeeping, home health aides, nursing, as well as food service for them. So it essentially would provide everything that you'd get at an assisted living facility, but sort of out of the comfort of your own home. And of course, with COVID and all the deaths we've seen in nursing homes, there's increased demand for this type of a model away from a large facility. But there's always been a demand for people that have wanted to sort of age at home and have faced obstacles in trying to retrofit traditional houses into ones that can accommodate wheelchairs and mobility issues. The plan is for these five structures, all looking like this. Two units in each, 10 units in total, spread over the two and a half acres of land. Now, what's in front of you are technically two separate applications. One is for a text change to allow this use. There's, when we looked at the regulations, we were somewhat surprised to see that there's not exactly a great fit for this type of offering. So we want to change the regs to make this permissible. And then, of course, we filed a special permit for this particular site to allow it at. The, we do have, and we submitted late this afternoon. It may or may not have made its way to you, but you'll have plenty of time to review before public hearing. A market analysis that we had done by an appraisal firm here in Connecticut that does senior housing that I hope will substantiate that, you know, there really is a need for this type of housing here in Norwalk, if you had any doubts about that. And the plan of conservation and development that was recently adopted in Norwalk does talk about Norwalk's aging population. And, and it actually specifically states that it's part of economic development that as that elderly population increases, quote, "Some will desire or require new housing options." And we think this is, this is one of those new housing options that can fill at least some of the need in Norwalk. And we sort of recognize that this need for housing like this, I think it spans the spectrum from low income all the way up to super luxury. Everybody needs it, and this is not going to fill all of that void. But we hope it helps out a little bit. Before I give you the actual text of what we're proposing for the text change, I just want to give you, to give you some sort of perspective about, I'll say, how big our ask is here. On this lot, under the current requirements, if we didn't ask for any text change, the, you need 6,250 feet for a lot. If there was a way to divide it up exactly by 6,250 feet, you'd have 17 lots, each of which would have a single-family home. Now, because there's wetlands and you've got to have a road. See, if you see this parcel over here, this I'm sure was a subdivision where they built a road with a cul-de-sac and put the houses off of it. We could do something similar here. We wouldn't get 17 units in. We'd get, we'd get about seven lots in for seven single-family houses. Additionally, under the, in the B zone currently, which is again where we are, we could subdivide it into seven lots. We could put five single-family homes in. And actually, in the back here, we could put, make two of the lots daycare centers and put 35 kids each in, on those lots in two different daycare facilities. Now, that would require a special permit. But, but to give you a sense of that, if we, if we went that route, you'd have, what, four people to a house, five houses, 20 residents, about 70 kids on the daycare plus the staff. So you'd have around 100 people using the site. 10, our proposal with 10 units, you're looking at 10 to 20 people occupying the site. Another point of comparison would be this assisted living facility next door. This, this, that, again, was the same developers that got this approved. When, it's in the B resident zone. So we could, right now, without a text change, we could say, hey, we want to put assisted living in here, just like is next door. We've got a smaller lot than next door. Next door, it's 71 units in there. Based on the lot size, we figure we could put about 50 units of assisted living here. Again, it's a special permit use, but it's required, but it's allowed without any kind of a text change. So our text change gives us 10 units. And we think that's fairly nice and complimentary of the transitioning from this fairly well-developed, intense usage up towards single-family. And, and so we think it, it fits. And it's not, it's really not, at least in our view, hopefully, not too much of an ask for that text change. The, the text change, let me show you that we're asking for are really two changes. One, there's already in Norwalk a definition of elderly housing unit. It doesn't exactly encompass what we're proposing. The A is the existing elderly housing unit definition. We've added B, that within this zone, within the B resident zone, a dwelling unit designed for and occupied by an elderly person, which is a defined term under your regulations, which is part of a development offering, housekeeping, professional caregiving, meals and other supportive services, as well as exterior maintenance of the dwelling and landscaping. So it's an alternative to congregate, to a congregate care facility. So that's the change to the definition, which allows our type of use. And then within the B zone, our proposal that was to say that you've got to have at least two acres and a minimum lot area of 6,250 square feet per unit. And that would allow what I've just shown you. This is your staff memo that I'm showing you that was probably in your packet. And what your staff has recommended is they've recommended a fair number of additional conditions or criteria. This is within the text amendment. So I know typically you'll often add conditions to a special permit approval. These are conditions that would be in the text of your regulations themselves. They, they've asked that it be limited to two-acre parcels or more, which I hope you're fine with, we are fine with that, we are a two-acre parcel. They've asked that it be located within 0.25 miles of a principal or arterial road. This site is that the density be one unit per 6,250 square foot lot area, which we are comfortable with. And this proposal is that the structures be single-family or duplex. Again, that's what we're proposing and we're comfortable with that. We've proposed it as well within the complying with the schedule, limiting height and bulk. They've asked, they've put out in there, again, these are all points of discussion, but 25% of the property in a conservation area, 40% in an open area or green space. This is, in looking at the landscaping plan, we are comfortable with, with that. And there's a few caveats that I'm coming, but, but we've got, what's dark green here would be a conservation area. I believe that's right about 28% of the site. And the, the open space or green area, we can certainly accommodate the 40% that's proposed in the staff memo. And that, that doesn't propose any sort of hardship for us. Stormwater, low-impact development techniques, again, is something we think we can accomplish. Solar on the buildings is more of a trouble point for us. Although Spinnaker recently put solar at 300 Wilson, that's the Sono Ice House building. And, and so they do have some experience with solar. They have concerns about it in this particular development, but are committed to making it as green as possible or as sort of economically and reasonably possible. And so what our hope would be, as we go through this process with you, that you'd consider not including that as, within the text itself of any amendment in your regulations, but that it is part of your consideration of special permit criteria, that you listen to what we have to say about how we intend to make it a green development. And if you agree that it's essentially green enough, as we propose or agree on, then it's on a condition. And if, if you ultimately require something like this as a condition of approval on the special permit, we'll have to deal with it. The, I will say that, you know, we do view this use as a beneficial use for the city, beneficial for us, but also beneficial for the city. And, and so, you know, we proposed a whole lot less restrictions on the, the ability to replicate this in other parcels in town. With all of these requirements, I would expect that you'd see a fairly few subsequent applications for elderly housing like this. That's fine with us because we get our development. But on the other hand, it may be that you don't want to be quite so restrictive in allowing this more broadly in the B resident zone or throughout Norwalk. Again, that's obviously up to you, but we are throwing that out there. We've, we've been in front of the wetlands last night. They've got a public hearing for us scheduled, I believe, January 12th. We are hoping that you'll schedule us in the near future for a public hearing and refer us to the planning commission so that, for the text amendment, so that hopefully we can get their blessing on the project as well. That's all that I have to present. If, if you have questions or concerns for me or for the developers, we'll hopefully either address them today or be ready the next time we're in front of you.
Attorney Blank, given the exterior maintenance, are these going to be freestanding housing units or are they going to be condominiums?
They're actually, right now, the, so as a very technical matter, it hasn't been 100% decided yet. But, but realistically, the, the plan right now is actually to have them as rentals with, with the property manager managing.
Okay. The other question is, looking at your plan, I just wondered if there is frankly adequate parking. Especially if it's a husband and wife, you have one car garage. Another car can be parked, I guess, in the driveway. But there only appear to be, what, 12 or 13 other parking spaces?
You know, no, actually, it's, and I can get you the exact numbers, but I, but it's significantly overparked. Because in, these are garages. So you've got a car in the garage and in the driveway, which I think satisfies your regs in and of itself. And then you've got two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. So you've got like three and a half spaces per unit.
My, my, my concern here is that we, this is something for the commission to discuss, but especially where there may be caregivers coming and going or even living there. We, we may wish to take a closer look at parking requirements for this type of housing. I, I think it's at least worth a look on our part. Can you direct us to other similar units in any of the surrounding communities?
I think Clay or Jerry are aware of one or two. They, I don't know if they're muted or not. That, I'm not, I'm not aware, but I think they may be. Jerry?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Sorry, what was the question?
Other similar developments in Connecticut?
We don't know of any in Connecticut.
Connecticut.
There is one in Westchester.
If you guys are in the same room, can one of you mute?
Yeah, sorry, Clay Fowler. There's a large one in Rye called Osborne House, which has been long known as one of the premier elderly facilities in the area. I can't remember how many years ago, but a number of years ago, they did a, a large cottage job, very similar to this. So the answer is yes. I don't know the parking requirements there, but we certainly can research that for you all.
I think that would be helpful.
Sure.
It looks to me like there are ample parking opportunities there, particularly if you have someone who's disabled, you know, you're unlikely to have two cars for two people living in a house where they also need a caregiver. And there are all those extra spots. I mean, I really don't see a concern.
Well, I'm not sure there is a concern.
Yeah.
If I might, I'd like to see a little research.
Mr. Chairman, if I might interject, it's also the case that because this is near, very near Route 1, we are on a bus route. Point well taken, though, about the potential extra car. We'd like to just reiterate that not only is this designed for an older population, but it's also designed for disabled folks that are very often forgotten. And this is, we're not doing this out of the kindness of heart. We just think there's a need for it. And therefore, we think we can meet it. But we will look at the parking issues.
And Chairman Schuman, we did, in looking at this, we looked at, Norwalk's got a whole bunch of different housing options for seniors that have different definitions. They all have different parking requirements. So there wasn't really a uniform standard that we could go by in Norwalk, but we've got two and a half spaces per unit, 25 spots for 10 units, which, which would exceed any of the other sort of senior use requirements. But we'll, we'll, we'll take a deeper look.
Yeah, I understand, I'm not being critical. I just want to make sure that it will be adequate to the use.
And if there's anything else, otherwise, hopefully you can get us scheduled in the future, in the near future.
Steve, would it make sense to wait until we have response from the planning commission?
Yeah, so we can put that on their January agenda. I don't know the date because they have multiple meetings in January due to capital budget. It also has to go to Conservation Commission. And I think that their hearing is tentatively scheduled toward the end of January or middle or end of January.
January 12th.
With Alexis, they have, they may have quorum issues based on vacancies on the commission. So I don't know exactly when that hearing will occur. So you can't take any action until they've made their decision. But it's possible we could start it towards the end of January and then keep the hearing open pending comment from Conservation and Planning at that point.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else, any other questions? All right, if not, we'll move on. Before we take the next item, since you may recall at, not at our last meeting, but the meeting before, we closed the hearing on the text amendment for the Wall Street Recap Associates. So we are in a position where we can vote on that text amendment this evening. I think, however, I'd like Steve to just refresh everyone's mind about that before, before we vote.
Sure, so if you recall, there were actually, there was one text amendment application. And then for, there were individual site plan applications, which also required public hearings for both the new building and the completion of the Wall Street Place Building, which is on, you know, Wall Street and Isaac. The text amendment hearing was closed at a prior meeting of the commission. There were, if you recall, there wasn't really, there was no public opposition to the amendment for fourth. It was a minor, I would call a minor modification to text that was installed in 2019 as a part of the West Ab Wall Street redevelopment plan. And it doesn't allow, I would say it allows anything different than what you could already do. It just changed a little bit the measurement point for the upper story setback. So that really is what the text was about. The resolution was provided to the commission last week for your consideration. It did go to the planning commission for referral, and that was approved as well. So I think you could take action on that portion of the application tonight. And obviously, we'll reconvene on the other hearing items once we confirm a date and that there's notices sufficient.
So any questions or discussion regarding the text amendment?
Can we bring it up?
Give me a minute, I don't have it up, but I can get to that.
This is just the setback piece of that.
Right, that, that's all the text amendment was pertaining to.
Like on the fourth story or something.
Right.
Give me a minute, I gotta navigate there.
Mr. Chairman, while Steve is looking for that, could I make just a comment?
Sure.
Giving, given how hot a potato this application is, wouldn't it make more sense for us to do this at the public hearing than now? So that someone doesn't say we did it in the dark of night?
Well.
I'm just wondering.
We've, we, you know, if, if the commission agrees, we certainly can do that. My, my own feeling is, we had the public hearing. We, I don't believe we received any comment on the text amendment. We closed the hearing. So there's nothing untoward in our acting on it.
I agree, I think it's innocuous.
If the commission feels that, you know, you would, you would prefer to do it with more of the public tied in, we can do that, we can. Do we need to put it as an agenda item, Steve, if we choose to do that?
Correct, yeah, we would, we would re, put it on the agenda again, if that's what you'd like.
Okay, so we would, we would handle that the same way we're going to handle the public hearings. Either next week or, or I suspect more likely the first week in, the first meeting in January.
Here, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
I sort of agree with Rick, with Dick about pushing it out and just doing it as a bundle and not complicating it for ourselves. But I'm not sure what others feel.
No, I agree with that as well. I don't think it will hold anything up. No, I agree with that as well. I don't think it will hold anything up and, and I would feel better about waiting until we do it in public.
We can do it. Well, you're, it's still public now, but I get your point. We can put it on the agenda for the 15th, and you can take action on it that night. That way it's on the agenda. The, that, the text amendment itself doesn't require a public legal notice. So it's just a matter of placing the item on the agenda for discussion. So if you, if you're not comfortable voting on that, then let's just put it on the 15th and.
Let me just double, double check. Galen, are you okay with pushing this back?
Sure.
Okay. Stephanie is shaking her head. Michael's okay. Frank? Okay, then that's what we'll do.
Cool. Sounds good.
Okay, good. All right, the final action item. 11-20 S P, BPC Capital Management Two LLC, 96 East Avenue. Eight residential units in historic building, preliminary review. Who is representing the owner?
Yes. Hi, I'm Mark Klein, the attorney for the applicant, BPC Capital Management Two.
Can you turn your volume up a little bit?
Sure.
Or just bring the mic closer to you.
Did that, is that better?
No.
No, not really.
Okay, I apologize. I might have to use my headset, which I was hoping to avoid.
Attorney Klein, before you start, Mr. Chairman, I hate to be Mr. Interrupter, but could I say one thing?
Sure.
I was in the chain of title in this building back in the seventies that they allude to. Attorney Bovey, I've known for 30 years because he's a lawyer and so am I. I did not sell him the building. I have no business relationship with Attorney Bovey. And until this application came in the mail, I didn't, or over the email, I didn't know anything about it. I do not feel that I have a conflict, and I do not intend to recuse myself, but I just wanted to share that for the record, because I did notice that my name is on the field card. That is one of these.
I appreciate the disclosure, and I agree with you. I don't believe, on the basis of what you said, that there's any conflict.
Thank you.
Okay, Attorney Klein? Now we can't hear you at all. I, I think you're muted. Now you are muted. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not muted.
That is better.
That is better. Okay. I guess I'll just have to go up as close to the camera as possible. So I apologize for that. I'm still very new to this, this whole Zoom webinar experience. So I apologize.
We'd be the last ones to criticize.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you very much to the members of the, the zoning commission for having us tonight. Again, my name is Mark Klein. I'm the attorney for BPC Capital Management Two LLC, which is the applicant for this property. Steve, I was told that you might be able to. The other thing is, we don't have on our team the screen sharing capabilities, the expertise that Attorney Blank had. So are you able to put one or two of the elevations on the screen? You're on mute.
Yeah, I can pull that up. Why don't you start and I'll pull up as we go.
Okay, great. Oh, thank you very much. So the, the rest of the team that's with me here is Brad Craighead, who is the principal of BPC Management Two LLC, which is also doing business as Norwalk Green Living. We also have Frank Dierno, who's the architect for the property. And Frank, I'm just going to give a brief summary, and I'm going to give, let Frank give most of the details of the project. And we also have Wayne DeVanzo, who's the civil engineer, who will also be speaking. We also have John Bovey available. You know, John is, is an attorney at Norwalk, as I'm sure most of you know. He is also a part owner of the building currently through his company Shanghai and BA Trading Company. Norwalk Green Living is the contract purchaser for the property at 96 East Avenue. And that's what we're here before you tonight for. We are doing a special permit application to convert the property at 96 East Avenue in Norwalk from commercial offices to eight residential apartment units and 350 square feet of office space and a slightly expanded building and reoriented site plan. Just to give you a little bit of background regarding Norwalk Green Living. You know, Brad Craighead, who's the principal of Norwalk Green Living, is a very experienced developer in the Norwalk area. He has an interest in the preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings, specifically in the Norwalk Green area. This will be Norwalk Green Living's seventh project in Norwalk and the fifth building conversion project in the East Village District, which each of those properties centered in or around the Norwalk Green. You know, he invested all of his properties for the long term. He's one of the founders of the Norwalk Green Association. And as part of that, he's been, become instrumental in helping to revitalize and at the same time preserve the Norwalk Greens' unique character. He's done a beautiful job with all of his project in the air, projects in the area, including 85 East Avenue, 87 East Avenue, 2 Park Street, and 8 Lewis Street, which are all close by to the property at 96 East Avenue, which is for what this project, you know, this application applies. And so as far as the, you know, the project itself, the conversion into eight residential apartment units and 350 square feet of office space. You know, for the zoning regulations for the East Village zoning district, the completed property will offer almost 2,000 square feet of open patio and outdoor recreational space, which is significantly in excess of 150 square foot minimum requirement per residential unit in compliance with the Norwalk's parking requirements. The site's going to offer 17 parking spaces to residents with eight for the four two-bedroom units, six allocated to the four one-bedroom units, and three allocated to the non-residential office space. The design and the character of this apartment building, it's intended to be a boutique building, and the site is going to be consistent with the architectural style and other traditional buildings in the surrounding neighborhood. It's expected to appeal to the growing segment of the population that is working from home on a part-time basis. And as with all of Brad's other projects, you know, the facade of the building is going to be, you know, kept intact. He is, you know, obviously very, very concerned with the historical preservations of the buildings that he's renovating. So, you know, we've taken account all the feedback that from Brad's initial Zoom meeting with, with Stephen Michelle, along with Frank Dierno on October 28th and subsequent communications since. So they've altered and amended plans in accordance with the feedback, including the most recent plan submitted today, which added in a bathroom to the, to the office space of 350 square feet. So we do feel that this project is in keeping with all the other properties in the East Village District, including his nearby residential properties, and also some other mixed-use properties on East Avenue, including mixed-use property with 11 residential apartments, which is right next door. And this one's only seeking eight residential apartments. So with that, unless there's any other questions, I'll turn things over to, to Frank to give you the more specific details.
Let me, let me just remind you, this is preliminary review. You needn't go full bore on all of the details. Save that for the public hearing.
Yes, absolutely. This, we are fully aware that this is an introductory meeting, so we're going to try to keep, be brief. We're sure everybody wants to go home soon, so. All right. Well, most of, you are home. At least turn off your computer screen.
Hi, everybody. This is Frank Dierno. I'm an architect that represents this project, and the name of my firm is Balance Architecture. I'm a native to Norwalk, and my office here is in New Canaan. The project is described as exactly as Mark stated. We're renovating an existing building to update the structure to today's current standards. And we're going to incorporate the character of the front facade. Replace, repair, anything that is in need of care facing East Avenue. And we can pull the elevations up. There it is. You can see this building is, what we're presenting is very residential in character. It's not an apartment building. It's, it's really a residential apartment house. And that is the goal. Scale, proportion, detail. It, it's very, we, we put a lot of effort into creating this scale, this character, this architecture. And I think that's the real discipline we have in respect to this neighborhood. There's a lot of beautiful homes on this street. Connector that is connecting these, this structure is a apartment courtyard with an open patio. And we also offer in this design is a covered patio area, which is really sort of a conservatory for the residents. There's eight apartments at the plaza level, which is at the rear of the building. It's an entry point. It's a main entry point towards the very rear of the building. And that's where the office space is located. So you can actually walk through the entry at the plaza level, take a set of stairs, and be right in the middle of the building at the open patio. Out of the eight units, six of the units are accessible by the open patio. So security, prominence, people seeing each other, that's really what we're trying to create here in this project. There are four units that are one bedroom. And the remaining four units are two bedroom. The materials we're using are very similar to the architecture of the neighborhood. Clavber shingles, asphalt roof, dormers. Windows that are traditional light cuts, bay windows, offering a covered porch that is existing that we're going to renovate and add a standing scene tin roof. And some of the gable end areas in the dormers will have cedar shingles. On this, on the west facing, that is facing the river. Which is really the, the tallest point of the building towards the rear. We can see that we're, just move my screen. There's some balconies, again, because that's facing that beautiful sunlight. And they're covered roofs, and you could see the lower area that the plaza level has the front. It's really the main entry at the plaza level. There's two parking spaces offered there. And we're really trying to get the residents to enter at this point. And that's why six of the units are prominently accessible from this entry.
Let me ask you a question. My recollection is in this area. This is required to be mixed use. And you've put in office space. It seems to me, one of the reasons for mixed use is to help to activate East Avenue. And yet, the office space and the access to the office space are through the rear. So it does nothing at all to activate East Avenue.
Okay, point, point taken. We will look into that, but the, really the design was, the intention was to, to give the residents that street appeal and be able to use this neighborhood. And I will talk to Brad. And Mark, do you have anything to concur?
I would just say that the, you know, it is, the office space is prominently located in the building, even though it is towards the rear. But I mean, I mean, you know, going, using that property, you can't miss it. I mean, it's the first thing you see, you know, when, when you turn down the street. So, you know, and also, I mean, I would just say that, you know, the, the surrounding area, you know, as I pointed out, I mean, the, there are 11 residential apartment units next door with, you know, it is mixed use, but I know there's a hotel across the street. There's various other residential buildings, including Brad's property at 87 East Avenue, which is diagonally across the street on the corner. So I'm not sure if, you know, if I agree that it's all office space in the, in the surrounding area.
Mark, or Chairman Schulman, can you hear me? This is John Bovey.
Yeah, I can hear your phone. Thank you.
Chairman Schulman, just so you know, if you review the building, all of the office, all of the commercial use of that building enters from the rear of the building currently. No one enters from the front of the building. It's convenient for everyone's clients. Parking is all in the rear of the building, and all the entries to all the offices are effectively in the rear of the building currently.
Thank you.
I have just a question. This may just be of my own experience. My understanding is when we talk about activating a street, we are talking about restaurants, we're talking about stores, shops, they walk to, et cetera, and they object in the Wall Street area and the West Avenue area to offices. I'm living for is not activating the area. So I guess I don't understand the activation that is caused by having the opposite hand front. I just, I just don't, I just don't get it.
I would, I would concur. And as, as Attorney Bovey pointed out and others, the orientation for all of these buildings is parking at the rear. We've took, we took a lot of time to change the elevation on the west side of the building so that it becomes the main entrance and that it's very attractive and easily accessible to both residents and commercial tenants for the office space. So that is the main entrance, which was what Frank was showing, the building with the two and a half stories on it. And, and I agree with you. To me, activating the area requires people to be there. And I don't think that this project changes the flow of traffic, but it brings people to the area on a more permanent basis, who are more likely to contribute to the vitality of the neighborhood, particularly in the Wall Street area. Personally, my goal is to use the Norwalk Green neighborhood as the gateway, which is predominantly residential, to help stimulate commercial activity in the form of restaurants and bars and otherwise in Wall Street.
I'd just like to add that I think that if you look at the front elevation of the building and look at the beautiful aesthetic of that building with the wrought iron and the single-door entryway, certainly from an aesthetic standpoint, I would think that it makes more sense to have any business entries in the rear of the building as it is now.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to me to be the kind of street where, you know, there are people walking along, but where pedestrian access is something that we normally put on here. Maybe I just don't understand.
Yeah, but I couldn't agree more with you. The idea, once again, is, I mean, increasing street use in the form of people walking as opposed to driving is absolutely one of our goals. And if this was, continues to be an exclusively commercial office people. And if this was, continues to be an exclusively commercial office people building, people simply drive in and drive out. The other four properties that I have in the area include two that are almost directly across the street, which is twelve apartments, and then two other buildings that are on other sides of the green. I can tell you that just those four properties alone have contributed to a residential element that didn't previously exist. Since that, since then, many other apartments have gone in, which is a net positive to the area because people are walking on the streets now in a way that they really didn't do five years ago. And if anything, there's excess, there's excess commercial office space with no one using it. And there's a shortage of high-quality residential space, excuse me.
I just, just going to say, I agree with Galen, I think that, and you. I think that having the apartments there and giving people the ability to just walk around the corner down to Wall Street is going to be a major plus. But I do have one question. What are you going to do with the wrought iron in the front?
I think we're going to wait and see what the consultant comes back with.
Yeah.
There's some question in terms of what, how legitimate it is to the, to the structure. The idea here is that the original farmhouse is from eighteen forty. One of the other properties that I've developed, Eight Lewis Street, is remarkably similar with a very simple facade. So we would, we would defer to the, to the expert, and, you know, we will bring it back to its original state.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, is that the Attorney Klein, is that the end of the presentation?
Is there anything else that you wanted to add, Frank?
No, I'm really excited about this project. Again, being a Norwalk native, I, and I can point out, this is a parade route. When we will have a parade, it's a great spot to have these beautiful residential buildings, because that's what I remember growing up. Everybody was on the street, and it was a great atmosphere. I think we can do this again. So I'm really excited about this project.
I think we do have our civil engineer here.
Wayne, do you have anything you want to add as well?
No, just very briefly, Wayne Devant's over here for county engineering. The proposed development actually reduces the total impervious surfaces by eight hundred square feet. And per the Norwalk Drainage Manual, they're not really required to do any stormwater mitigation, but we are going to be installing and proposing a retention system. Nevertheless, due to the geometry, topography of the site, it'll help manage the stormwater runoff and, and I think be an improvement. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll, we'll put it on the schedule for a public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, the final, the final item has been withdrawn. It is not on, is no longer on tonight's agenda. So, comments of the director, Steve?
Sorry, everybody, I don't, no excuses, my apologies.
Steve, what is the, excuse me, what is the status of the hiring of the consultant for the rewrite of the regulations?
So I have to get just, I couldn't get it turned around for the Planning Committee of Council for December, their December meeting, so I'm going to be at their January meeting, working with the Purchasing Department on having them, maybe we'll do a separate purchase order for the consultant to start looking at the East Avenue proposed reg changes so we can get that piece of it working now. And, you know, that will take a month or so for them to do. Hopefully, they're on board by the end of January.
Okay, sounds good. Comments, commissioners?
I have one question, Steve. I was hoping you could help with or point me in the direction here. One thing I've been thinking about as we're, you know, a lot of these big projects are coming with retail, additional retail to Norwalk. And when you drive around, you see a lot of for rent places. And I know there's a lot of projects already in flight and already improved. And I was trying to see if there's any place that sort of aggregates the totals of total retail in the, in the city, how much is projected from like an approved standpoint, and how much is possibly still vacant right now? Just to get a sense, because I'm trying to anchor all these conversations about adding retail into places or pushing people to add more retail versus just the realities of what I'm seeing, of seeing so much retail that's open and with the world that we're in, I don't know about the future of retail. Is that something that the Development Agency sort of keeps statistics on? Or there, or something, some other group within the city?
I'll, let me ask Sabrina in Economic Development if she has those numbers. One kind of point, I guess, of clarification is we, we've kind of loosened up what we, we don't typically, so we don't require retail so much now as it is as commercial. And we've kind of broadened those uses out quite a bit. And then also, we've limited like, like the depth they have to, to, to have their store or their business to qualify. So like if the, it doesn't have to go back to the full extent of the building, so the rear of that, they can do other uses that are, you know, more profitable and easier to fit out than the commercial.
Yeah, and when I say re-timing, like the whole, like, all the stuff that we've been talking about, I guess it's all one and the same, but that'd be super helpful.
Okay. Yeah.
I'm just worried we're going to end up in a world, you know, fast forward ten years where commercials looks very different and real estate looks very different. And we're going to have a ton of excess real estate in a way that we're not, may not be intending for or realizing. But I just maybe.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, and I, I think maybe to, maybe Chairman Schulman's point when we were talking about the Pinnacle project at the last hearing was that with, a lot of the commercial uses are like kind of neighborhood commercial and neighborhood retail uses, and a lot of service uses where, you know, maybe e-commerce doesn't quite fill that void, and, you know, that can be met with smaller shops and food establishments, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm sort of wondering, though, how real that is in the sense of how viable it is to open up a small shop. And then, you know, are people actually going to really go do that first, all the other shops all around town? You know, how many laundry mats do we need or dry cleaners? Are people going to really start clamoring in for that or deli? You know, I just, I hear what you're saying. I just am concerned.
Okay, we can, we can check for sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I think Wall Street should go first, considering tonight. Just might as well just rip the Band-Aid off next week, pop the agenda, just get it done.
You know, they've, they've had to go last, I think.
I know, this is what I'm saying. I feel for these guys, and.
It's, just to, to throw it out there, if we, if there is a notice concern and we can't meet on, if we can't hold that hearing on the fifteenth, I hate to even ask, but Mike, you can, you can yell at me anytime. What if that, what about the, like, the following Monday or Tuesday before Christmas, if we did like a one-hour meeting on Wall Street Place?
Would that accomplish, would that be enough time for everybody to speak and all that?
I think so, because I don't think you went that long with, when you had the first public hearing. So I don't, and you're really, at this point, you're really only talking about the design of the building. So I, I think we could get that done, and it should be a relatively short meeting.
Yep, personally, I'm all for that. I'm all for having a lot more frequent but short meetings than these really long.
I agree with that.
And so.
I think we all agreed at the last meeting.
So I mean, if we push it on to a time when we have another meeting already scheduled, we're adding another layer onto something that is already a full schedule, I'd rather have a separate meeting for it. And as Josh says, the poor guys have had a frodo with all of this for Wall Street.
Let me, I have my calendar in front of me, let me just take a quick look. So we've got a meeting Tuesday. What Steve's talking about is a meeting the week of the twenty-first, that's Christmas week. It's not an issue for me, but I certainly understand that it could be for others.
What's the notice requirement, how many days?
Well, it's a question that, the first question is whether, since we've, and I, I might, I gotta be careful what I say. It's a question of whether they are, first off, are they required to re-notice it through, like, a legal notice? Again, since they've already opened the hearing, all right, since you're only continuing the hearing, you have to provide new notice or not. So that's really the first question that we have to ask. If the question is, if that answer is yes, you have to re-notice it, then it's, then it's the timing question that you just asked. Is, is it the typical, once ten days prior, then once, no more than a couple of days before? I'll pull out the exact statute. So that, that's why I'm asking about the following week, because if we're required to run two legal notices, then I don't think we can comply with next Tuesday. If we're not required to do that, which I, while we were in one of the other applications, I already emailed Corporation Counsel to get their two cents. So if they come back and say, no, you can just put that item on the agenda, then we're okay. But I won't go till tomorrow.
Well, Steve, when people, when people try to watch this meeting tonight, they just were not able to sign in, they just like came to a locked door?
Right, there was, and I'm surprised I didn't get any emails from anybody saying, hey, where's the meeting? No one, usually I would have gotten a bunch of emails from people saying, hey, we can't get in, where's the meeting? That kind of surprised me. But when I saw there was no, there was only one attendee and it was a phone number, I figured that was somebody on the applicant side, so that's what triggered it. If we, if we would have caught it five minutes before the meeting, it wouldn't have been a problem because we could have gone back in and fixed it and restarted like we did, but we just didn't catch it.
So from the technical standpoint, then, the public notice was, was timely for this meeting tonight, but they were locked out of the meeting tonight. So the question would be whether it's the whole notice again or that people would just be expected to show up at the next meeting?
Right, so yeah, that's the question. Do we have to notice the public hearing again? And if so, my guess is we might not be able to do it on the fifteenth.
Okay, so the, the only, the only question we have to answer this evening is if it can't be next Tuesday, are people both available and willing to meet on Christmas week?
I am.
I could do either the Monday or the Tuesday.
How bad is the agenda for the fifteenth?
I'm sorry, what's that, Richard?
I just wondered how heavy the agenda was for the fifteenth.
The fifteenth has the Garavel Subaru public hearing, which I don't think is going to take too long. And I can reach out to them, and since you've already seen the presentation, have them not pontificate about every item under the sun. Also, you have Pinnacle, so that, that will probably be on. And that's really going through the design issues. And, oh, we also had ninety-three Winfield continuation of public hearing.
Right.
I guess it goes till the following week, then.
Well, we, most people who wanted to speak have spoken, and people don't get a second bite of the apple, unless, unless there's new material, significant new material introduced.
Yeah, we had an inquiry from a gentleman who's, who wanted to speak again. And we looked, and he spoke for over twenty minutes at that hearing. So I said, you know, if you have comments, you can put them in writing, and that's it.
So Frank, are you okay for a meeting? Okay, Rod?
Yeah, sure.
Stephanie?
Most likely.
Okay. And Michael?
Yes, I'll be around.
Okay, so we could do a meeting Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, I'll confirm tomorrow and then let everybody know.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? I see a lot of shaking heads. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All second.
All in favor?
Thank you, sorry about everything tonight.
That's okay.
Perfectly all right, as long as it's not a regular occurrence.
Yeah, we've done well every single meeting. I mean, one glitch is not a big thing.
Exactly. All right, see you all, see you all Tuesday evening.
Night, everyone.